Second, so moved by Dr. Billard, second by Ms. Johnson. Nice guys.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move for us to amend the agenda to take off Personnel Services Committee.
All right, there's a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment to remove the Personnel Services Committee, item number four. We'll have a discussion. If there are none, all those who favor it will please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I propose a same sign. Thank you. That passes, and the agenda is passed as amended. With that, we will move on to the Fiscal Support Services Committee. Chairman, Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. We have one item under Fiscal Support Services, tentative adoption of millage rate for CY twenty-four fiscal year 2025. Both the presentation and in action. Ms. Bush.
All right, good afternoon, President Freeman, board members, September tenth, Dr. Sims. Today, we're presenting the calendar year 2024 Tax Digest and military presentation along with the tentative adoption. Our mission here at Bev County is that the Bev County School District maximizes student achievement and social emotional well-being, building a consistent community and safe, equitable learning environments. And our vision is that students are empowered to lead, learn, learn, lead, innovate, and serve as productive and caring citizens within their chosen path of success. The way we'll get there is through our For Me platform with learner outcomes and with the goal to be matched and enrolled, motivated to enlist, multi-faceted entrepreneurship, and meaningfully employed. Our overview of today is to share the calendar year 2024 Tax Digest information and recommended military options with the Bev County Board of Education. This presentation will cover digest numbers received by the county tax commissioner on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the calculation of the rollback millage rate. Options outlined in the overview will be presented to the board with board actions to decide on the planned millage rate adoption for calendar year 2024. We previously went through the terminology in the board meeting last week, so this is here for information. The most notable item here is the bottom of the calendar year 2024 net asset, net net excess value of digest was roughly five point nine billion dollars. With this translated to per millage is a CY twenty-two millage, a mill value of nine, of five point nine million dollars, and it calculates to a full rollback rate from fourteen point six seven four, which is the current millage rate, to thirteen point eight eight six. The comparative digest for this calendar year twenty-four versus calendar year twenty-three, we see an increase in property digest of roughly five point five percent totaling three hundred and eight million dollars. This graph shows the split of those assets of the digest, fifty point six two percent of those being residential, commercial totaling thirty-three point four four percent, and industrial and utilities around fourteen to fifteen percent. Millage rates, option eight, we have set as a, an option to maintain the twenty-two-three millage rate with no, no millage rollback, which we've set the rate of fourteen point six seven four mills. This would be an effective tax increase of five point six seven percent, generating a gross income of four point five million, but after the levy and fees and the unglotable per, of two percent, we would end up with a collection of around four point three million dollars in addition to what we did last year. Option eight also provides us the opportunity to lower the deficit that was budgeted in twenty-twenty-five from a nine point three million down to a deficit of five million dollars. And as that trend continues through FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and through FY thirty, you see where the fund balance and expense ratio begins to decrease as well. The state mandates that we keep a fund balance expense ratio of fifteen percent maximum, which we've exceeded that and to an eight percent minimum. So between FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-nine, we would be within that range of fifteen to eight percent. But in FY twenty, under this adoption, we would hit that eight percent minimum. The cost of homeowners for the option eight versus a full rollback would be an additional fifty-seven point two dollars per year, or four, four dollars and seventy-nine cents per month, and that's based on a two hundred thousand dollar house as a tenant. Without the homestead exemption, you would see an increase of sixty-three dollars and four cents or monthly, a monthly increase of five dollars and twenty-five cents. This chart shows with option A chosen, what the additional revenue would be. It would be approximately five point five percent higher than previous year, providing four million, five hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue. So benefits to this option are that the fund balance expense ratio remains above fifteen percent through twenty-twenty-six. It doesn't drop below eight or drops to eight in twenty-thirty. It does give us a better opportunity to support our learners of all types and to better support the staff through salary competitive increases. It does also give us opportunity to implement a whole portions of the salary survey that's been mentioned for the last couple of years. And again, on the bottom here is showing the cost of this two hundred thousand dollar average home price in Bev County and the cost of the taxpayers for implementing the small tax increase. Next steps of option A is approved, and this is going to be the next steps for options A through C is that we would have today's meeting, the board would tend to adopt which rate it chooses. Then we would advertise on August twenty-fourth, the newspaper for one week prior to the September third meeting, where we would have two public hearings. We would also have another public hearing on September tenth, followed by a final adoption on September tenth to fifth. The next two slides are the mandatory tax digest publications that are required to advertise in the local news organs and on the website. So this is a five-year tax history if the option to maintain the millage rate is chosen. The next is the notice of property tax increase legal ad that we'll have to run next week that displays the time, place of the, of the three public hearings that are making. Moving to option B, we've prepared a partial rollback of half a mill, which brings us to a millage rate of fourteen point one seven four mills. The overall impact on this is a gross, a net collection of one point five million dollars in excess of what we budgeted for in the FY twenty-five budget. The impact it would have on a five-year trend analysis would be that we would sustain that fifteen percent fund balance to expense ratio through twenty-twenty-six, but you would see in twenty-six and twenty, and twenty-seven and twenty-eight, that number starts to drop pretty ra, drop pretty rapidly. And by twenty-twenty-nine, you're at a six point eleven percent fund balance to expense ratio, which is not allowed. So actually, we'd have to be taking to increase revenue at that point in time. The cost of the homeowner to partially rollback a half a mill is twenty-one dollars and two cent a month. I mean, twenty-one dollars and two cents per year are a dollar seventy-five per month for a two hundred thousand dollar home value. And again, the millage rate trend with this option chosen shows that it's about a one point nine percent increase in revenue of, and that revenue would equal about one point five million dollars. Choosing this option and continuing would, would, would have a tax increase, a millage rate increase of around two percent. As we mentioned just a minute ago, the fund balance expense ratio would be dropping below that fifteen in twenty-twenty-six and well below eight percent in twenty-twenty-eight. It would give us limited opportunities for those early learners to continue the need to look for cuts around the district, and it wouldn't allow us to do much of a salary increase going forward. The next steps for option B, as in A, are the same. The calendar here states the next steps. And the five-year tax digest history and the notice of property tax increases are shown for illustration. Moving on to option C. This was an increase, an option to increase the twenty-two-three millage rate by one mill to fifteen point six seven four percent, I mean, six seven four mills. The impact on this would be an increase in revenue of approximately ten million dollars. This option would stabilize the budget through FY twenty-three, twenty twenty-three with the estimated increases in revenue and expenditures outlined here. It would give us a healthy fund balance expense ratio for the next five years. The cost of the home, a two hundred thousand dollar homeowner in Bev County would be a hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-two cents per year under this option. That equates to about ten dollars and eighty-eight cents per month. Again, the comparison for the last eleven years shows where Bev County has been and what this would do. This one mill increase would do provide that ten point four million dollars of revenue. Some pros here is it keeps that fund balance to expense ratio of fifteen through the twenty-two-three year. It provides additional direct supports to district budget to our students and need and all students in that matter. It also provides us for, with a greater opportunity to better support our staff through salary increases, benefits and retention and retainment efforts. We could implement that salary study that we talked about earlier, a lot sooner. And we would have minimal need for millage rate increases through the twenty-two-three year if equalization holds steady. If option C is approved, this is the same, same calendar as options A and B. This is an illustration of the five-year tax history that would be provided to the public along with the notice of property tax increases. The last option is option D, which is illustrated as a full rollback. That is a full rollback of point seven eight eight mills to a millage rate of thirteen point eight eight six mills. This has a slight decrease in revenue under this calculation of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, but it is a net zero tax increase. The five-year trend shows that this is a little less favorable or much less favorable than the other options. By twenty-twenty-seven, we're well below the fifteen maximum fund balance to expense ratio. And by twenty-twenty-eight, we fall below that minimum of eight percent. So it actually would be needed pretty immediately. If we chose this twenty-two-four option at thirteen point eight eight six mills, as you see here, would generate a little bit of negative income per the, per the calculation. The benefits and dangers of this is, as we talked about, the fund balance expense ratio would, would be compromised. Opportunities to better support our, our learners is not there. Better support the, for the staff is going to be the same, and we would not be able to do that salary study. We would also probably have to be looking at tax anticipation notes and issuing those probably around twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven. We would also need to be looking at millage rate increases by twenty-twenty-six to offset that. Next steps, if the option D is selected, is you don't have to have public hearings for this option. We could advertise this starting on August twenty-fourth with a final adoption on September third. This is the five-year millage rate trend history with that option chosen. The last word of the, part of the section is the summary of options, tax history, and comparison of other school districts. We've illustrated each of the previous slides on one display here for your convenience. The five-year trend analysis of those fund balance to expense ratios is given here, so you can have a close-up comparison of how those look over each option. And again, we want to point out the history of the millage rate in Bev County. Working down this page, it shows where the millage rate has been set, what that change in the millage rate was. The value of one mill from the calendar year nineteen to the calendar year twenty-four year, tax years, and it also shows which property, how much property taxes have been levied along with the other kind of tax revenues that we receive and the trend over those, for those over that period of time. This next comparison shows from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-three millage rates at various school districts across the state. And our last slide here is a slide comparing similar-sized districts, anywhere from fifty thousand students to twenty thousand students, and how we compare to those schools. It specifically looks at the two thousand and nineteen taxes levied versus the two thousand and twenty-four taxes levied, what those look like for those districts, and how that, how that correlates to the net tax increase in each of those districts. The color, the different colored sections at the bottom represent each option that was presented and how that option would look in Bev County compared to those others. We had previously only showed that option D at the bottom, so I thought it was important to show that even if, even with any of these options shown on Bev County, property tax levy per student is lower than any of these represented. That is the end of the presentation. And Dr. Sims, would you like to make some statements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bush, for your presentation. And before we go to our recommended action, I do want to honor Dr. Jackson's question. The question was in reference to correlations to student achievement. So we went back and made our best efforts to see if there's any correlation. It's very difficult to make a direct correlation to student achievement. However, there are some correlations and conclusions that we can come to and some food for thought. And I want to keep this slide up as a reference point. A couple of things I want to draw up with this slide as you look at Bev County in relationship to other school districts similar size and in close proximity when it comes to increases in tax revenue. We are the only district, as you can see, with a single-digit million-dollar increase in annual property tax revenue, with the only exception being Monroe County, but the difference between Monroe County and us, while they have a large amount of property tax revenue between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-four, they have eighty percent less students than we have. The other piece is that we are the only district with a single-digit percent increase property tax revenue in two thousand nineteen, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four. And this is potentially meant to explain why we are now and continue to make efforts to become more competitive when it comes to comparing ourselves to other districts, specifically in the space of recruiting and retaining the best and brightest talent. As we think about it, though, in terms of the numbers that you see on this slide, the differences come in when you start talking about resources, human and otherwise. I mentioned recruitment and retention, but I think the obvious here is that in comparison to other districts in terms of our tax revenue, you see less opportunity that we have in terms of procuring and maintaining resources for our students in addition to the human resource. The other piece in that space has to do with a simple equation, more funds equal more flexibility. More funds equal more opportunities, and we want to set ourselves up to have the most available opportunities for innovation, for the fulfillment of the needs of our students, and again, to recruit and retain the best and brightest talent. Another thing, as we look at these numbers, is a response that all of these districts have had to engage in, in addition to every district in the state of Georgia, and that is healthcare costs. We've talked about that at nauseam, and help me out, Mr. Bush, I think the amount that we have to absorb in two, twenty twenty-five is six point five million dollars in addition to what we currently absorb. Can you, can you give me clarity on that?
From, from FY twenty-four fiscal year.
Yep, the FY twenty-five budget.
There's a healthcare and policy increase, six point four million dollars.
Thank you. The final piece I want to bring about and just remind us of are the cuts that we've made. First of all, this is our first year that we will not have access to ARP and ESSA funds as those conclude in September of two thousand twenty-four. And we absorbed some of those costs in our general fund. We're also coming off of five million dollars approximately in cuts that we made from last year while at the same time losing these billions of dollars in funding. As I emailed you earlier in the summer, school improvement dollars also decreased. If you recall, we sent you an update in terms of an unforeseen decrease in school improvement funds to the tune of Dr. Rogers', one point five million dollars, am I correct? One point five million dollars. So we had to make a decision. Do we tell those schools, well, you can't have those things that you're allocated for, or do we absorb the cost? And in fairness to those schools and what they need, we absorb those costs as well. And then there's the last piece, and that is the significant threat of not qualifying for equalization funding if we drop below fourteen mills. And, Mr. Bush, do you want to offer any, any clarity on that piece? Because as we talked about that, I think it's important for the board that we stand a chance of not qualifying for equalization. And if you recall, this past year, we had twenty-three million dollars in equalization funding. And dropping below fourteen mills places us in a, in a, in a situation in that space. Do you want to provide?
I can try to provide some clarity to that. It's not fourteen mills as, as the property value is set, fourteen mills. It's a fourteen-mill effective rate, which takes all of our property values. It says what's the millage rate? Of all those property taxes, I'm sorry, pileup payments, tabbing, all those miscellaneous taxes that are involved. Right now, we stand at seventeen percent, around seventeen. If we were to go back to thirteen point eight, we're going to move that effective rate down to fifteen. That's getting really close to fourteen. And put that twenty-three million dollars, because twelve million in twenty twenty-four, twenty-three in twenty twenty-five, that's a, that's a significant risk that I would, I would try to steer clear of.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. So just in response to Dr. Jackson's question, I thought it would be So just in response to Dr. Jackson's question, I thought it'd be good for us just to remind ourselves of some other significant impacts in this budget season, and some significant changes that we've had to engage in as well.
So we have quite, excuse me, so what's the recommendation at this point, Mr. Bush?
Will you hold on for your work? So the recommendation at this point is that the Bev County Board of Education chooses to tentatively adopt option A, which is a miller rate of fourteen-point-six-seven mills as the calendar year 2024 miller rate for the Bev County school district.
Is there a recommendation also as to when the dates for public hearings will be held if option A is the approved recommendation?
Yeah, the, the recommendation is to also approve, the calendar is stated Tuesday, September 3rd, we would have a meeting at eleven, at eleven AM. Tuesday, September 3rd, we would have a second meeting at six PM, and Tuesday, September 10th, we would have the third public hearing at five PM.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Board members, you prefer the recommendation? Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, and mishandling. Are there any questions for discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, let, yes, Ms. Anderson. Probably, you said you're in, you're affected.
Okay, so I just had several questions. Number one, the budget that we recently approved, did that include any of the salary increase that you had talked about for staff and possibly salary study? Did that budget include any of that?
There were small pieces on there that got us a little bit, but we identified in the budget, sorry, Ms., Dr. Dillon, so in FY25 budget, we had identified several positions that were deemed to be thirty percent undervalued. We, those were the positions that we, it was awarded ten percent increases to. Now that doesn't address a wide majority of that salary study for the classified staff. It does not.
Okay, and then would, if this budget was, or this miller rate was approved, would we then again need to modify the budget?
It is something we would, we would, we'd have a new budget amendment to increase revenue, for the budget revenue, but we would also be looking at implementing those things we talked about.
All right. And then in terms of fund balance, right now, based on this chart, we're showing a beginning fund balance of sixty-one million, eight thirty-three, two fifty-three. How does that number compare to, I meant to bring my numbers in from June 30th, and I do not remember what our ending fund balance was as of June 30th.
I believe the June 30th fund balance, I don't have the dollar round right off the top of my head.
I'm thinking it was around seventy million, if I'm not mistaken.
It was, it was up there. I do know that revenue to expense was around break-even, which would be.
Right, and then there was another five million that was, so basically, we're still ending ten million as we had budgeted, with the deficit, we would have a budget of about five million, from what I understand.
I think it's premature to do that.
Yeah.
That's why we do this.
I mean, I'm sure there's other things that might come in, but.
Yeah, we still will defer revenue through August 31st, for one, so we still have more revenue, we still have, there could be more expenses to book, and as we work through the audit process that started this week, we'll have better numbers on the final, the final FY24 year. But it's kind of hard to determine at this point, based on the June numbers.
All right, um, let's see, it was, and then, okay, that's all my questions for now.
Dr. Whitaker.
So just to be clear, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Bush. Maintaining the miller rate at the fourteen-point-six-seven-four mills, is that an increase?
Yes.
To property owners?
It is.
It's a what?
It is an increase of five-point-six-seven percent.
Wow. Thank you.
Mr. Frey. Kind of piggybacking on that question, the increase based on the figures you ran is that the average homeowner in Bev County, the average was two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, that increase came out to fifty-seven dollars per year, if we went with option A?
Yes.
Or four dollars and seventy-nine cents per month?
That's correct.
Okay. The equalization, equalization grant funding, this year, you mentioned we got twenty-three million dollars from the state.
Correct.
Last year, we got twelve million dollars from the state. Is that right?
That's correct.
Does, and so what I'm hearing is that our miller rate weighs into the calculation of what the state gives us on equalization funding?
It does, a little bit, but it's also based on the ranking of property values across the state. So as each district increases the property value, if you look at that last slide, you'll see the sum went up seventy-three percent. We went up forty-three percent. So that's really declining against the average of these school districts I presented. As we decline, we get more equalization money, but their, their role is if you go below fourteen effective mills at any point in time, you would lose that grant.
Which would, if we lost the grant, but this year, it's twenty-three, we don't know what it would be next year.
That's correct.
Okay. And you're saying that if we rolled it back, we would, it wouldn't be necessarily below that, but we'd be real close to it.
You're getting, yeah, within a couple of mills.
One of the things I'm looking at is the, I look at 2016 was the last time there was a tax increase, and the miller rate was raised, it basically went from no increase for the three previous years, to in 2016, there was a two-million, a two-mill jump, which was an eleven percent increase. This would be half that, a five-and-a-half percent increase, is that right?
Correct.
All right. I had a conversation just this weekend with two different district employees, teachers and staff members. One lost four teachers to Houston County over the summer. The other one, their school lost six teachers to Houston County over the summer. I've got a, you know, I, I said this last year, Houston County is in a different boat than the rest of the counties we talked about, they've got asterisks next to them, because they have a one percent sales tax that can go to teacher salaries, and none of these other counties, including Bev County, can do that. By law, we can't do that.
Correct.
So we're trying to compete against somebody that's playing on a different field, basically. And when I see, when I talk to two different people over the weekend, and they tell me, you know, combined, they've lost ten teachers to Houston County because of the salaries, that was the only reason, that concerns me. And so I have a great concern about us losing good quality teachers, and the reports I heard of these were good teachers who went because they were told they could make more money in Houston County. We've got to do what we can to try and build that up. We were very fortunate that our equalization grant this year was as big as it is. I would hate for us to put that in jeopardy. My other thought is, we've had a long time to think about what this was going to be. We had a very short time from when we actually got the tax digest last Thursday until today to vote on it. And for all of those reasons, I'm inclined to agree with doing option A. If for no other reason, then it allows us three more public hearings to hear from the public, as opposed to if we did a rollback, and that would be the end of the discussion. So for what it's worth to my board members, I think we've been kicking this down the road as long as we could. We've been saying that we needed to consolidate schools. We have a very solid plan and committee in place to do that. I firmly believe that we will have consolidation by the end of this year. Some good strong recommendations doing our part, and even further do what we can with the budget, but I think option A is a good option. I think, I don't want to put that equalization grant at risk, twenty-three, that we lose twenty-three million dollars from the state, and that's huge. But I also think we've got to do what we can to stop this flight of us training up good teachers and then leaving because we can't manage salaries. And I know we can't bring it even, but that's, that's my consideration, and I think that's how I'm. Dr. Whitaker.
Can you remind us again what percentage of the budget goes to teachers, salary?
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, eighty, I don't have it right off the hand, but it's well above eighty percent.
Eighty?
Eighty percent of our budget. I don't know if that's correct for the teachers, but our salary benefits makes up well above eighty percent of our budget.
And that.
Sixty-point-five. For instruction, I have sixty-point-five-eight percent of the budget goes from our, makes up to eighty.
And just to, just so that I'm clear, so the average, not the average, but a homeowner with a home price bet, two-hundred-thousand, would only pay, how much per month? Oh, annually?
Give me one second. Was it fifty-seven dollars? Yeah, fifty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents with a home state exemption, and sixty-three dollars and four cents without a home state exemption.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments? All right, there being, are you raising your hand, Dr. Dillon? All right, there being no further questions or comments, all in favor of the motion, let me know by the word aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? No. Opinion of the chair that, that motion passed is seven to one. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I believe that's all the business that we have for today. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It will be adjourned, thank you.